Good morning, welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, August 5th, 2015. We are in the Senator hearing room here at Courthouse Square and we'll begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we don't have any presentations this morning. We do have someone signed up under public comment, Carrie Wallace. Are you? Okay. If you'd like to come forward, probably over here would be, yeah, that would be great. And tell us what you're here to talk about. Have a seat. Go ahead and sit down.
I think I've talked to a few of the people, you know, Mr. Campbell. My son has one that drowned. Several different people, and I've heard quite a few different stories on what is being done and what can be done, and I've gone over your minutes and meetings and I've been told that it's approved. So, basically what I'm here is to present what we are trying to do. I've heard that one is the emergency call box is being moved to Salmon Falls. There's no date. I would like to know that that is a for sure thing. I heard that, I have an email from Mr. Evans's office, that it's being worked out with Frontier. I need to know if that is a fact or if it's just being brushed aside. Two is that the loner stations were approved. We have a GoFundMe account and we have donations and we have support from Big Five that have been donating life preservers and rings to house at these parks. I was told, I had a meeting yesterday with Alan Haley and he handed me from the Marine Board, apparently, the design and asked if we wanted to build it, but I don't know if that's really legal. If it is, we don't have a problem building it. We don't have a problem donating the money for the county to build it. We're providing the lifesaving devices. If there was one there for my son, he would have made it. You can't, you only have four minutes. Not to mention there's been numerous drownings up at these parks. These loner stations are across the United States and they're also across Oregon. I know that there's going to be theft. I understand that. You're not going to stop that. Alan said that he would make a sign that's in memorial for my son. I think the more personal that you make it, maybe people will not steal, but if they're going to steal, maybe they needed it more. Just with one shop, I've had 26 donated. My son's celebration of life is the 15th and in order to attend, it's not a public thing, it won't be in the newspaper, is people are to bring a lifesaving device. We're going to house these. So, like I said, I've, I've heard different things. I've had some say, well, just contact me. This is what's going to happen. It was already approved in June after this happened, but I went through all your meetings and minutes and everywhere and I, I guess I just don't see it and I need the reassurance because I have people donating money. I have almost $3,000 donated in cash and I have life jackets being donated. I'm trying to fix the parks. I just need to know that this is approved because one of the emails says that apparently you guys thought I was just going to give them out. I'm not giving them out, I want them up there housed. I want a small station close to where, I have a picture of my son's friends that attended this, that went up there a few weeks ago for him. And the water, there is no shallow water anymore, it's just deep. So, my concern is as if this can't be done, then the parks need to be closed. My son's not the first to drown up there and I'm trying to make it the last. I've spoke to Grady and there's nothing we can do about three pools because it's federal. They're trying at least to fix their area. They're not allowing parking outside. I think we need to do the same thing. If you can't park in the park, you can't be up there. They thought that my son was kidding and it wasn't the boy on the news that went in after him. It was a total separate stranger that just got there and heard screaming. That's how crowded it gets. There was no alcohol involved. In fact, there was no alcohol up there. Our life has changed forever. He was my youngest. He was my husband's only. I am in contact with several parents that have lost a child and I know that with other people, they, they can't imagine, you think you have a loss, you don't have a loss until you've lost a child. And I'm not going to stop on this until it's done. And what I'm trying to present is a lifesaving thing. I'm not asking for you to pay for anything, I'm asking to fix it. If I have to fund everything, I will fund it. But I'm asking, I see in the minutes and meetings how chickens were approved in the city limits. Super. I'm talking about saving people's lives.
So, first of all, thank you for coming and thank you for all of the energy and effort that you're putting into this. And yes, absolutely, there's no way that I can imagine what you and your family have gone through, so I certainly appreciate the work that you're doing on this. So, this is not the only meeting where we approve things. So, we have community corrections board meetings once a month and that's where we get together with our sheriff and other people with law enforcement and we've had numerous conversations in that forum about the parks and about the safety in the parks. That's where we actually approve the signage and that type of thing. So, if you were looking for approval here on a Wednesday morning, you wouldn't have found it here. It happens in other, in other meetings. Alan Haley has been to those meetings and I can't recall off the top of my head whether this discussion happened in that forum or whether it happened in management update, which we have every Monday morning at nine o'clock and we also go through administrative issues there and that's where we give direction to staff and make approvals of things. But in one of those two forums, we did have a discussion about it and it was approved. And if you're meeting with Alan Haley, he is the person that we've designated, I mean, he's our Public Works Director, so he oversees county parks and all of those issues. And so, if he says it's legal, he's working with legal counsel and it will be legal. So, we didn't take a vote, you're right, here in this forum, but we did have some extensive conversations. We can find you the minutes for those if you'd like to see them and then, and you'll have the summary of the discussion that the board had with our sheriff's office and with Public Works on it.
It would be nice because I interviewed with K2 so that the public understands that the money that they're donating is actually a real thing instead of just me asking for money.
Right, right.
And so, he's doing a follow-up for our story and everything that's being approved.
Right.
If I could interrupt, you asked the question about the telephone and I had a message from Jen Fritz, her Deputy CIO says it is a sure thing, so it looks like that is moving along. And I know since then, they've made a new opportunity at the Elkhorn Fire Department which wasn't available before. So, as sad as this is, we're trying to address it for the future, no more problems.
Thank you. Anything you want to add?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Carrie, thank you for coming here to, to express your thoughts and, and I have some pictures here. In fact, I could share them. I actually took some pictures of the station up at Detroit Lake where there is one. And I think the concern, there was a life jacket on there when I got there in the morning, there wasn't any life jackets when I got there in the afternoon. And the two cans that they had, had life jackets in them were actually filled with garbage. And so, you know, I, I understand setting this thing up, it's going to require a volunteer effort, I think, somehow to maintain it in the future. We can get it set up through Public Works with what you're trying to do, but I, I do believe we have an issue in our parks more, you know, safety issues, safety should come first. And this is one of those things where I think that the setup is really nice that they've got going. It's probably the same diagrams that Alan gave you of what it could look like and should look like. But thank you for, for being here and thank you for putting this forward. And again, I personally sad for your family and what you've had to go through and even to get to this point. And we hope that it will make a difference in the future.
If you could leave your email with Kim, or you have an email, and then we could just send you those minutes, would that work for you?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have several other people in the audience. Did anyone not sign up and came here to speak during public comment? Nope? All right. So, we'll move now to consent. On whose turn is it on consent?
Well, somebody's not paying attention, so.
All right.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve our consent calendar this morning. We have one item that's under Health. We approve Amendment Number One to an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Department of Human Services to receive $521,000 in additional funding for drug and alcohol free transitional treatment services and extend the term through June 30th, 2017.
All right, I'll second the motion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's approved. Now, we have one item under action and this is so appropriate today because today we are having the Marion County locale as a kickoff to the Pay for Success Technical Assistance Grant that we got. Would you two mind sitting over, you don't have a PowerPoint, right? So, yeah, so if you'd sit over there instead, I think that would probably be better. Camera picks you up better over there. All right, so this is approval of a grant from Third Sector Capital Partners LLC to Marion and Multnomah Counties with a not to exceed value for Marion County of $30,000 for a social innovation fund feasibility study. And we have Fay Fagel and also Bridget Zanni. Good morning, thank you for being here.
So, if I could give you just a little bit of background, we have for quite some time been trying to resolve a gap in services at the juvenile department. And what we have is that there are no residential treatment programs for youth out of home placements within our community that we can access. The only program is at Catholic Community Services and that's a specific program right now for gang-involved Hispanic Latino youth. We have access to residential programs through commitment to the Oregon Youth Authority. So, what happens is that if we have a youth that needs to access a residential placement, we take that youth to the court, the judge makes a decision and that youth is then committed to the Oregon Youth Authority for placement in a residential placement. And the Oregon Youth Authority has residential placements throughout the state. And the programs are great programs. The concern that we've had ongoing is that they're scattered all over the state and not in Marion County, other than that one program that I talked about. And so, we are placing youth outside of their own community, disconnecting them from their family, their community. And although the programs do a great job with the youth, when the youth is done with their treatment and then either returned to the community, they are back in their family system that no changes have actually taken place within the family because it's difficult from that distance to be able to do the level of family work that needs to be done with many of these families. And so, the youth either returns back to their family or an alternative placement is created for that youth. And so, for some time now, we've been having discussions about what opportunities are there for us to create our own residential treatment programs within Marion County. And the research really talks about that although there's an important place for residential treatment, there's also an important component around strengthening families so that the youth can remain in the context of their family and receive the treatment that they need. And so, we've been looking at that as an alternative and thanks to the assistance of Commissioner Carlson and a connection with Multnomah County and some ongoing discussions, we have found this possibility of developing this relationship with Pay for Success and Third Sector. And Third Sector is a nonprofit and they're a grantee of the Corporation for National and Community Services Social Innovation Fund. They receive federal funding. And then, we applied for a grant in partnership with Multnomah County to receive technical assistance through the Pay for Success process. So, the way it would work is, or the way it's working now is that we've had several meetings, we've set up a structure working together with different groupings and other partners to look at the feasibility of us entering into this agreement. So, what, what this would be moving forward is it's a process by which you can have investors in social service programs. So, right now, in order for us to put together a program, we have to come to you and say, hey, we need so much money to be able to put together a program. This process allows for investors to provide money to social service programs and then if the program is successful and achieves its outcomes, then there's a, a payment back to those investors or a return on their investment. And the idea is that can we save other entities, state entities, other governmental entities, money? So, the idea would be that there's an upfront investment, we get the outcomes and then we're able to pay back the investor. And the cost to the state system has been reduced at some level, which allows for the money to be available to do this transaction. And I know I don't always explain it very well, so I don't know if Bridget wants to add anything around how that process works. And Bridget has been really taking the lead for Marion County at the operation level around implementing this partnership. And Oregon Youth Authority is also a partner with us in this.
I think you did a good job.
So, what we're asking for with the, the board meeting today is approval of the funding mechanism. We have $30,000 that, $15,000 comes through general fund and $15,000 was a donation through Capital West, is that correct? Mountain West.
Mountain West.
Mountain West, I'm sorry. And then, for that, we get about $90,000 worth of technical assistance from the federal grantee agency, Third Sector Capital.
Thank you. So, let me just add on a few points here.
Thank you.
First of all, our partnership with Multnomah County. Sometimes, we like to say that we are different than Multnomah County and we're independent from Multnomah County, but in this instance, we have a lot in common with Multnomah County. There's a, Multnomah County has a very high population of youth of color that they serve and since they're larger and they also have more county funds to be able to contribute to it, they've been working with this youth villages model up there with, with that population and it's been fairly successful. We have probably the highest, if not, if not, we do have the highest, not even close to the highest, we have the highest number of Latino youth that we serve in our juvenile system. So, when we're working on diversity, we have a lot in common there. Secondly, and for all the reasons that we put in our reentry grants, we, we have a lot of institutions here, a lot of families that have social needs, a lot of poverty in Salem, and, but what we don't have is numbers. So, for this particular initiative, we are, even with the two counties, we're kind of on the cusp of being very small. And they want larger numbers so they can do an evaluation. And so, by, if we were by ourselves, there's no way we would have been successful in getting this. But partnering with Multnomah County, we had more success because we had, we had larger numbers. I ran into Judy Shiprak at the AOC conference last fall and, just in the hall, and she was like, so what do you think of Pay for Success? And she had been back to a national conference, a NACO conference, and had been to a workshop on it and actually had been approached by, I think, someone from Third Sector Capital inviting Multnomah County to participate. And so, then that, and so she asked us if we'd be interested in partnering with them and this is something that I'd been looking at because of the adult reentry initiative for some time and thought it would be a great opportunity. So, we wrote the grant together and as Fay explained, we were successful. The part that was a little bit weird about the grant, and I've said this before, is that they want us to pay them money to match, which I've never been in a situation before where you actually had to put cash in, I mean, you could show cash locally, but they actually want our cash. So, that's the 30,000 that we're approving today. Mountain West Investment Corporation, Ron Hayes in particular, met with him, explained him what we were doing and they were interested enough in this model that they were willing to put in half of what it is that we're putting forward in the cash match that we were required to do, which we're very, very grateful for. We thought that we might be getting some, an infusion of resources through House Bill 2031, which made it through the committee process, substantive committee process of the legislature, but ended up not moving forward in the ways and means process. But maybe this is sour grapes or sweet lemon or whatever the, I never, I always get those confused, but I think that this process is going to take a bit longer than I had anticipated when we got the timeline. We're not going to be, have this figured out probably for about a year, where I thought it was going to be more like 90 days. So, there's no way we would have been able to take that resource that we're getting from the state and move it into this process. It would have been premature. It would have been wonderful to get the service, but maybe going slow to go fast is, is the way to go and, and we haven't given up on the idea that we would approach the legislature then coming up in 2016 for a similar ask as what we had before. And then, the last thing, and Bridget, I'm going to turn this over to you to describe this, we have, we, we met once kind of in an orientation meeting up in Multnomah County with a lot of folks. Bruce went up for a part of that meeting, Camber went up for the meeting, Jen Calvin, Bridget, myself, Fay, I'm trying to think who else, there were a number of people from Marion County that.
Bruce.
Oh, yeah, Gloria was on the phone, right? Just for part of it. So, we've had a number of people that have been involved. And when we were up there, we said, you know, we're fine coming up to Portland because they're, they're, we're not the only project that they funded in Oregon. They've got a couple others that are also in Multnomah County. However, we are Marion County and we do want you to come down and see what we look like every now and then. And so, this is the opportunity that they have today to tour our juvenile department and come to Courthouse Square and see us in our own environment and kind of understand the context within which we're working. But there is a leadership group that's meeting today that of Multnomah and Marion County folks and I know that Commissioners, you'll be sitting in on a portion of that meeting this afternoon. And then, there are some working groups. So, could you just briefly describe the structure, Bridget, that you've been working on so that they can understand how we're going to move forward?
Sure. So, there's the Steering Committee, which is the group that's meeting today, that's got Multnomah, Marion County, both Commissioners and then some other staff from juvenile departments and their budget and legal.
And Representative Hack is on that group. And do we know who the legislators?
Yes, and I'm not remembering her name. It's a, a Multnomah County and I can't remember. I'm sorry.
We'll get the names.
Is it Jennifer Williamson?
No.
No, okay.
I know it's not Jennifer Williamson.
Okay.
And then, we've got a researcher from PSU that's going to be on the Steering Committee. Fairbores will be on the Steering Committee, but he won't be there today, I think, Joe O'Leary.
He's the director of the Oregon Youth Authority.
Oregon Youth Authority. So, we have two representatives coming today from Oregon Youth Authority. And there's the Third Sector staff. So, then there's three other working groups. Operations, which is kind of the, the structure of the programming. A Outcomes and Evaluation, which will also look at what would be the outcomes that would be agreed upon in order to measure success of, of a feasibility, for the feasibility program. And Fiscal, Financial, so the budget and the fiscal. So, that working group will probably come in a little bit later because we have to work out the operations and the outcomes and then they'll look at, I think the Outcomes and Evaluation and the data will feed whether or not the information they need to know, how do we fiscally, contractually do a Pay for Success project with government structure? I think that's going to be the, the crux of that working group. So, those working groups all have timelines and will, the Steering Committee will kind of oversee the work that they do and keep track of timelines and what everybody's doing and pull it together, is my understanding.
Okay. So, I've found the Steering Committee members.
Okay, thank you.
From the materials that they sent. So, there are, there's Commissioner Shiprak and three staff people from Multnomah County. Fairbores, Parkers.
Parkshoish.
Oh, thank you, I could never say that. Won't be with us today, but Joe O'Leary and Christine Kirk from the Oregon Youth Authority will be attending. Andrew Grover from Youth Villages. They have Laura Fur from the National League of Cities. She works in Justice Reform and Youth Engagement. Jody Hack and Jessica Vega Peterson are the two legislators that are on the group. And then, the researchers, Brian Renauer from Portland State University. And then, from Marion County, we have the three Commissioners and Fay and Jan Fritz and I think Jeff White is on vacation, but someone, maybe Camber is going to be sitting in for him. And then, there are a couple people from Third Sector, Brian Bichkovsky and Oscar Benidas. So, that's the leadership group or the Steering Committee as they call it. And then, the working groups as Bridget described.
So, where we're trying to get to ultimately is that we have youth that certainly need to be in youth correctional facilities. We have youth that certainly need to be in the statewide residential system. And then, we have youth that we manage in the community. But we also have a group of youth that are not doing well in the structure of their home or they do not have the structure that they need in their home. And some of those youth are ones that we're making decisions to actually commit them to Oregon Youth Authority and place them in residential programs, when the question is, could they actually be served in their home if there was some other services available to that family so that that youth was receiving services within the context of their family structure? And is there some family work that can be done to help support that youth to be successful? And that's the piece that we're trying to look at in this that's been missing in our continuum of services. And there's a higher cost to us actually sending those youth to a residential placement in the state system than there would be if we actually served that youth in the community within their home and in their family context. So, that's where we're kind of trying to look at filling in that gap in our service delivery.
Okay, any questions or comments? No?
We'll see you this afternoon.
Great.
Thank you.
And Laura, so, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I might clarify a little language you have before you just to correctly frame the issue. And part of this flows from the fact that the ability to do this comes from the grant that Marion and Multnomah County received and we entered into an MOU leading up to this point, so we're, where we've been working together with Third Sector. But I, to clarify right now.
Yeah, we're actually approving a contract, not a grant.
Correct. So, I think your language should be, consider approval of an agreement between Third Sector Capital Partners LLC, Marion County and Multnomah County for a social innovation fund feasibility study and Marion County match of $30,000.
Ready for that motion?
All right. Yes.
Madam Chair, I'll move approval of agreement between third-party sectors, Marion County and Multnomah Counties with a not to exceed value of $30,000 for the social fund feasibility study. Does that work?
I wouldn't, yeah.
I'd say match rather than value. I think that's.
Because I think our value does exceed.
Right.
Because that's where the grant money comes in.
Value exceeds a great.
So, I'll remove the motion. I'll withdraw my motion. So, maybe council should state the motion and I'll just restate it.
Consider.
No, not consider, just approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's correct. Approve an agreement between Third Sector Capital Partners LLC, Marion County and Multnomah County for a social innovation fund feasibility study and Marion County match of $30,000.
So, moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve an agreement. Three parties, match, not to exceed $30,000 for a social innovation fund feasibility study. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's approved. And we'll look forward to this afternoon. So, so, you know, we have, we're starting with lunch, right, 11:30?
Correct.
And then, we have the tour right after lunch. And Chuck's giving the tour, right? He knows it's like the nickel tour, not the course tour, right?
I reminded him yesterday.
Okay. Because we have, how long? About half an hour?
Yeah. We're going to actually do the tour before lunch, so is that, or would you rather do it?
We had actually talked about doing the tour.
Lunch first?
Yeah, having people gather.
Lunch will be ready, so.
Because they don't all come at once, remember? We had that conversation. So, have people sit for lunch and then we'll, we'll go out and do the tour and then after the tour, we'll move right into there.
Okay.
So.
Great, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, that concludes our business for today. No public hearings. At noon, we have two Commissioners going to the Woodburn Marion County meeting up in, at Luis's Taqueria, 523 Front Street in Woodburn. We also have the Pay for Success Steering Committee kickoff meeting and that actually starts at 11:30 with lunch first, then the tour.
Excuse me there, it showed 1:15 in Commissioners Boardroom for us, is that still the plan?
Right, so, right, so we're having lunch with the people that come and a tour so Multnomah and the Third Sector people can see our juvenile stuff. Then, we're all coming downtown and we delayed it till 1:15, so when you guys get back from Woodburn.
We might be a bit behind that.
Yeah, but you'll be in the bulk, but they were going to do it at 1:00, so I moved it back to 1:15. So, we'll do introductions and, you know, it's going to take us 15 minutes to get settled, so you won't miss much.
All right.
Okay, so then, tomorrow morning, 9:30 Thursday, August 6th, this Department Head-Elected officials meeting and that's in the Commissioners Boardroom upstairs on the fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. Then, on Monday, August 10th and Tuesday, August 11th, is the Association. on Monday, August 10th, and Tuesday, August 11th, is the Association of Orion County Summer Conference that will be held at the River House Hotel Convention Center, 2850 Rippling River Court in Bend. The next Wednesday, August 12th, at 9:00 AM, we'll be back here for our regular Wednesday board session in the Senator Hearing Room here at Courthouse Square. And that same afternoon, Wednesday, August 12th, will be the monthly meeting of the Economic Development Advisory Board, and that will be held in the Commissioners Boardroom at Courthouse Square here in Salem. So, National Night Out, you were talking about that as we were preparing. Tell us what you saw.
Well, maybe before we get there, there's a press release that just got, came across the wire here that I think the Commissioner will really want to know about. It was a news release from Mike Long about the first lumber company youth benefit golf tournament, a smashing success.
Yes, it was.
That you and I played in. It was a smashing success for you, I'm not sure for me.
Thank you.
Because in, in here, they go through and talk about the men's low gross was Pacific sanitation. They may have a relationship to the Commissioner. But men's second low gross, Sam Brentano team.
Now.
Brentano team.
Just so you know, we actually tied for low net, minus 11, pretty significant.
Okay.
But somebody make a second.
Further down in these awards that he announces, like, he goes into mixed low gross, the Duffers first place, at least I wasn't on that. But then, right underneath that is the Commissioners' Challenge.
Ah, nice.
Marion County Commissioner, Sam Brentano. What's that about?
I'll tell you what it's about. So, Kevin, I don't know what he's thinking. He comes up and challenges me right off, and he's throwing dollars out like I've never even heard of. It was like $100 a guy. And I said, I was thinking about a buck. So, we settled on $20 a team, which, it was just like a gift. I should have just said, well, pay me now. But then, the idea was to make a little presentation to Mike from the board. You're part of this in a way, then. Further contribution to the good cause. They raised like $16,000 that they gave away last year on scholarships up in the canyon, down into Dayton. But Kevin, I'm sorry, I had to say what I saw. He kind of throws a $20 bill at Mike and kind of slinks off, you know what I'm saying? Instead of, we could have had a nice little ceremony and started a tradition. I don't know what that's about.
Well, he's got it in the official press release.
Well, you're going to be in a minute.
He's got it in the official press release, so you're going to get some, you're going to get some.
There'll be a trophy next year. And don't expect ever to own it, you know what I'm saying?
I think we're going to try to get another Commissioner to have a team next year.
I know, I am not a golfer. Only time I ever did golf, well, I did golf twice.
But it was a nice tournament.
It's obvious that I'm not either.
No, no, I took golf lessons at Willamette when I was a student. It took us two hours to do one hole at the South Salem Golf Club, and I was wearing bell-bottom pants.
Yeah, you're done.
And a bee went up, got up and stung me on the kneecap several times.
That's enough of that.
So, this was a bad experience.
But you're asking.
And then, we did scramble, and Dave Fiskam was on my team when I worked for the state. That was back in the 80s. And I hit one decent shot the whole time, and they went, we'll take that one. So, yeah, that's, you know, I'm not.
But the question was, and I don't know why you can't stay on task, was the night out last night.
Okay.
So, if you would tell us about your experience.
You know why I can't stay on task. I got ADD. So, National Night Out, I went to your hometown to start with. I told them that you were going to Mount Angel and Scotts Mills, saw a few people that I recognized. The posse was there. I got pictures of that on Facebook. So, the Marion County search and rescue were on their horses there, and they had a nice park with a band. And the food line was, it was really long, and there's a lot of people there, and the band heading started. Went over there to, from there, crossed the highway to Dayton, met up with Rich, the Chief of Police there, in one of the parks, and there was about 20 people in that one. And then, I headed up the gates, and they had the fire hall packed, and they had it all set up with tables. And our Deputy Sean was up there. He gave instructions. Lynn County was up there. And the Fire Chief talked about having 72-hour kits. And they really did a great job of educating people on public safety issues at the gates. And there was one hamburger left, Sam, when I got there.
And you got it?
I didn't eat the whole night until like almost 8 o'clock, 7:30, yeah.
Great.
It was a good night. It was great to see all the neighbors out, up the canyon.
Very good. I saw your pictures on Facebook. That was great.
So, I did go to, I was a little bit late getting to Mount Angel, but they were, they had the biggest crowd ever there. And actually, we're, well, they tied it in. They had a 10-year-old baseball team. And I don't know what league they're in, but I was watching their scores. They were beating Kaiser on a regular basis. And I'm getting buzzed in my pocket.
Had nothing to do with the big toy, right?
Well, I thought everything in Kaiser had to do with the big toy. But it's a regional.
I think it was regional.
Anyway, these 10-year-olds, they took second place in state anyway, and kind of should have had it won. So, they got a real good group of kids coming up. So, they highlighted their accomplishments, had a little parade, and everybody's really enthused. Nan Fleck was running it. I also got word and thanks for all of us on the money that we sent for finishing Oktoberfest project. It's either being, it's either close to being done, it'll be ready, and they're going to be inviting us out to look at that. So, I'm pretty pleased about that. And they were really happy. But then, I go to Scotts Mills. I actually went there first, and it was just lovely. Probably 30 or 40 people, good food, and their park, real comf, in fact, I got two couples, why I got late going to Scotts Mills, or to Mount Angel. But what happened was, our deputies showed up, and this has kind of spurred me on, they showed up with their dog. And then, they started saying, yeah, we always get a Commissioner to put this suit on. And I said, no, no. I said, that's only a much more careless and younger Commissioner that would ever do that. And I got out of there, then got to Mount Angel by the skin of my teeth. But it gave me an idea, and this is where you come in. I think we could take care of these problems where you never get asked. And I think it'd be appropriate, in fact, I've already had the documentation made up.
I'm not wearing the bite suit.
No, you're not, if you sign this document.
Oh, okay, all right.
What this is, it's a Marion County Special Appointment to Kevin Cameron. He's successfully completed required training, approved by the Sheriff's Office, and therefore is awarded the special appointment as PCDD, which is the Permanent Commissioner Dog Dummy. You're going to be the first to sign.
I don't see your signature.
It's going to be on there, but I don't know if it'll pass. So.
Do we need a motion?
I think you do.
I think I'd make that motion. Here's a, just so they know that this is official county document, Mark, I don't know where you are. This isn't any made-up stuff. This is serious. And we'll just add it to his list of appointments. If I'd have been thinking.
Well, you have to talk to risk management, because the liability insurance.
Well, I already got it.
Yeah, right, but you didn't get approval.
I heard, it was in the dog bite suit at the Marion County Fair.
And that's what this picture of showing, that this is strictly legitimate.
Wow, and it's permanent.
It's permanent. Yeah, this doesn't change every year.
This is the only award that my fellow Commissioners have given me in the last year. I'm pretty proud of it. Permanent dog.
And I knew nothing about this.
Permanent Commissioner Dog Dummy.
But I'm all in favor.
This is perfect.
Because I'm not wearing that suit.
This works out good for all of us.
Yeah, it does. It's great.
All right, thank you. I'm glad you approved.
Do I need to sign my own award?
It's up to you.
Isn't it kind of like, sign in both sides of the paycheck with your own name on it? Yeah.
Well, that happens, you know.
Oh, I know it happens.
Oh, I wish I would have thought to have the sheriff here. We could have had that demonstration on national television.
That's who's not.
Did anyone televise it when you had the dog suit on? Did anyone take a video of it?
Yes. It's on Facebook, I think.
Is it?
Somebody's got it someplace.
We'll have to, we could play that at the committee meeting tomorrow and.
And just tell everybody they don't need to do this anymore.
Jolene made a video out of it. She's got a video.
Yeah, I got out of Scotts Mills pretty fast when they started sizing me up for that thing.
So, really quick, Aurora Airport ribbon cutting. So, how'd that go?
Um, just, you did.
Thank you for naming me in your remarks, too.
Well, they didn't even mention that you were there, so.
I know, exactly. That was a little noisy.
I did thank our Senator Merkley, Congressman Schrader for their help, and kind of talked about that a little bit, the funding, how important it was to Marion County. But a great group of people there, and excited about it. It was a nice event, that's all I can say.
Kevin, any?
Well, I want to go back for a tour. We have, we've got Public Works, Allen's going up, and the Sheriff's going up for the next PAM meeting at the Aurora Airport. So, maybe we can get a tour of it.
I want to go up, too. I haven't been inside of it.
Well, then, I'll find out when the, when we can get an organized tour. And you might want to just come up for that, one of those PAM meetings and sit in on that, because that's the safety area, and get all the neighbors.
They didn't hear, didn't lock in. So, when will actually start operations? About a month, is that?
It's further down the road than that. I think it was like September, yeah, maybe it is in a month, September, October, I think they're talking about.
Very well attended.
Yep.
I don't know, did you stay and watch any of the film when it was being constructed? I, that was rather.
No, I left right after you.
They used a huge, they have the, well, first of all, they say it goes underneath as far as it goes up, which surprised me. And it's quite three, four stories high, I got to think. But then, they set the big platform up on top of the crane, and they showed it in, you know, a whole day in six seconds, and it just goes, but it didn't look straight to me. And I don't know what you do, but nobody commented on that. And I know when I went out there, it's straight now.
Well, I took a picture of it. It looks a little like the.
Oh, well, maybe they didn't get it right.
But no, it's, the whole thing was a little crooked, but that was my photography skills.
And I hope that works. And the key things I talked about, and that we've talked about, and safety is number one, just to clear all that congested area. And you really, if, I don't, I'm not a pilot, we have Newburgh, Portland, Hillsborough, Aurora, all by air isn't very far. Being able to sector out the noise complaints, or what people in the communities hate, so they can certainly work around that. And then, the other key point is, what they, I think they said there were 1,100 jobs, but those are 1,100 high-paying, great jobs, an opportunity to grow more, and it's just a real economic engine up there. And as you know, we've supported it all we can.
Continue to do so.
Anything else for the good of the order?
I think we're good.
Kevin wants to go put on his suit and get the word.
I do.
Okay. I want to find that video.
Designated dog dude.
All right, so we will adjourn.